arrives. So, thank you very much for joining us this evening for Albany City Council Work Session, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one at four P M. So, good roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor Alex Johnson the second.
Here.
Counselors Olson is excused, Counselor Novak.
He just logged on.
All right, thank you. Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
Five counselors present, Your Honor.
So, good to see you, Counselor Novak.
Thank you.
So, at this time, business from the public, there was no public submitted any information or and or materials were signed in that were read the statement, persons wanting to this address the council during business from the public and or provide written materials, but the public record must register to speak with or attach materials to the provided email address before noon the day of the meeting. So, next up on the agenda is the S D C methodology evaluation by Robert, Rob Edmonds of Engineering Department.
All right, can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, forgive me for my appearance with the headphones and the mask, I'm in my cubicle today, so I need to not try to disturb everybody and and then, but I'll pull my mask down when I talk and be a little bit more audible. So, this afternoon, we are going to be discussing residential S D Cs and how they can possibly be hold on here, let me, and how they can possibly be updated to account for a variety of single-family home sizes. We're not going to be talking about resident, not going to be talking about commercial or industrial S D Cs, we're really focusing on on residential S D Cs. So, we're going to structure this afternoon, I'm going to do a quick intro, then I'm going to turn it over to our consultant, Deb Gallardi. See, most of you are familiar with her, she did a lot of our work with the general utility fee back in this last winter and this last spring, so, so she's on board helping us and as well as she has done pretty much all majority, if not all of our S D C work for the past twenty-plus years, so she's very familiar with the city and and our system, so. But before I turn over to Deb, I just really want to take a minute to talk about our goals for this, for this evaluation, kind of where we're at in this process, so, our goals simply are really to to answer the question, should small homes be charged the same S D C fee as larger homes? And if so, how do we adjust those fees, how do we scale those fees? And then we want to talk about pros and cons of making any changes. You know, we're not in a position where we have to make a change, this is just a proposal, something to consider, so. And what another goal that we have is, and we'll talk about more of this in the future, but try to remain revenue neutral, and what I mean by that is S D Cs were set with trying to to get a a set number of dollars that we can reinvest into the into the utility system, all based on impact and growth needs, so that dollar amount is pretty key to making improvements to the systems as we move to the future. So, what we don't want to do is make changes to residential S D Cs that reduces our revenue in the future, so we want to try to remain revenue neutral as we play with and make adjustments to residential S D Cs, so. So, keep, keep that in mind also as we move forward. And next, just really kind of where we're at in this process, last time we met was in June, I went over a quick synopsis of S D Cs where and and how they function, that memo is attached or was was or is attached to the agenda packet, so hopefully you've all had a chance to take a look at that, kind of refresh yourself on 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 those details. So, in August, we hired Deb, got her on board, and the last few months, we've been researching what other cities are doing for residential S D Cs, how they're scaling their their fees. We've been looking at options and kind of putting together its presentation to to go over some some details today, so. I think with that, I will turn it over to Deb.
Thanks, Rob, and can you see on my screen, share just the single slide?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so, launch into a little background here. Systems development charges are the one-time charges that generally are charged at the time of connection to the water system or at the time the building permit is issued, they can be, while while the the timing of the payment is often attributed to the connection with the water system, you can charge S D Cs for water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, and parks, and the city has all trans, all S D C types right now except for stormwater. They're also referred to as impact fees or capacity fees. They are designed to recover infrastructure costs, so they're different from user fees or rates, utility rates, in that they're specific to infrastructure costs upfront needed to provide capacity for new development. We do have statutory requirements in Oregon that provide guidelines for both the development of the S D C methodology and for ongoing administration requirements, but within those guidelines, there is flexibility to charge different types of methodologies, and so within that is our policy questions related to, for example, the scaling that Rob was talking about and that we'll be sharing examples of tonight. Some considerations as we consider the the most equitable defensible way to charge residential S D Cs are that these charges do are assessed before the system use occurs, so again, not unlike user fees where we have an established history of water use, for example, for that particular customer, we don't know going in how, what exactly the impact's going to be for a particular development. So, the methodology must rely on characteristics that are known at the time the development is permitted or connects to the system. And the impact measures that we use to charge the different S D Cs vary by system, so a park's S D C is going to be designed to recover a cost per person and is going to be charged to a home based on the estimated number of occupants of that home, occupants use parks, so that's the connection. Of course, people also generate water use and sewer flow, and so we generally estimate a number of gallons of usage, a cost per gallon a- as the basis for the S D Cs for wastewater and water transportation, we're concerned about trips that are generated particularly during the peak hour when the roadway capacity is going to be utilized at its peak, so there are a number of different ways that we look, define impact when we develop S D Cs. And data tells us that one size does not fit all in terms of single-family home. The average person per household varies based on both the type of the unit, so that would be single-family versus duplex, triplex versus a high-rise multifamily apartment that, so both the type and the size of the unit impacts on average the number of occupants, and you can just see in this chart, two different samples of data, the gray is based on Lynn County information specifically, and then the orange reflects Portland area, that as you move to the right of the chart and larger home size, the number of occupants on the vertical axis increases. So, that's the idea behind the scaling concepts, is that the number of people tend to increase as the dwelling size increases, and those same people increase the amount of waters, wastewater generated, trips generated within that unit. So, scaling structure is a way, as Rob said, to balance, achieve this revenue neutrality and also potentially address affordability concerns, because instead of charging everybody the same, based on the average for the type of residential development, single-family in this case that we're focusing on tonight, it's an opportunity to decrease fees on the lower end of the house size and offset those reductions with increased fees on the upper end, and it's all related to the system impact. These scaling methods really started being implemented for parks' S D Cs, because there's that clear connection between the number of people in the unit and that that correlates with the size of the unit, and so there's a number of examples in the state and across the country where these parks' S D Cs are scaled, meaning lower, at the lower ends of the dwelling size scale, and fees are higher at the upper size categories, so city or Bend Parks District in this case has a a methodology that has five different tiers of dwelling size, and each of those tiers are priced at a different level, with the lower fees being charged significantly less, in this case, almost fifty percent less than fees in the highest category. Now, this presentation tonight is not about fee levels and comparative between the cities and others, this is just to demonstrate what these other methodologies, how they're charged, so focusing instead on, you know, incremental differences, relative differences within the type of fees. Multifamily fees, you know, we can look at single-family versus multifamily, we can look at all residential development together, in the Bend Parks case, the methodology that was adopted is based on square footage for single-family and based on number of bedrooms for multifamily, so there's also opportunities to use different metrics even within the same type of infrastructure system. Other examples, City of Lebanon just recently this year adopted a transportation S D C that is based on the size of the dwelling unit for single-family, and that methodology includes three different tiers, and you can see that for the for the middle tier, kind of that average, the number of trips per unit is about one, just under one, and then the the smallest category is point seven-five and the upper category one-point-two-one, so again, you can see that the range of S D Cs within the scaling approach can can generate fairly significant differences between the lower end and the upper end, and this reflects data from Lynn County that's collected for other purposes, it's available as part of Oregon Household Activity Survey information, and we can that dataset provides us both the number of trips generated by particular addresses, and that's linked to assessor's office data on the size of the home, so it's very local and very specific to the transportation S D C impact. City of Ashland, City of Eugene have scaled S D Cs for water and wastewater that reflect their own datasets that show the relationship between water use and the size of the home. For water, we look at the summer water use and because that's when the water system is at its peak capacity, and for wastewater, we tend to look at winter water use, and you can see that in both cases, the the amount of use increases on average as the size of the home in square feet increase, and you know, there are different structures in this case, as opposed to tiers, the Ashland example, that each additional square foot of the house is charged at a rate instead of how, you know, so you can have any number of different rates that would be assessed as opposed to having three to five tiers of S D Cs like in the other examples, and the same with the Eugene wastewater S D C, that case, there is a base amount that's charged to each dwelling unit, and then an additional amount that's added for each square foot. So, those are some options for the water and wastewater. For this project, we are, as as Rob mentioned, we're really about reviewing the existing methodologies and identifying these alternatives that are being used in Oregon and elsewhere, and to look at what data is needed and available at the city to potentially develop these options, and then, of course, we want to be cognizant of potential impacts on revenue, because this discussion is not about exemptions or waivers to reduce the S D Cs for certain types of development, which is really a separate discussion, this is just looking at how we could modify the methodology to achieve revenue neutrality, but also potentially address affordability at the lower ends of the home size and impact. So, considering your current S D C methodologies, you have some that already do recognize, include a scaling factor based on the dwelling unit, and that's in the case of parks, where right now you use both the square feet of the dwelling unit and the number of bedrooms, so you're using both factors in determining what the S D C for a unit will be, so that already has a high scalability measure. And water, from there, we get to down to much less variability within the single-family residential class, most units within the single-family development category would be charged the same for water, transportation, and sewer. There's some scaling within water because the rate is based on the size of the meter, and you do have some examples where single-family meter might be, need a larger meter, but most of, most single-family homes are are served by the smallest meter type. For transportation, you, while you don't have different S D Cs within a class or a type of residential use, it, the the S D C does vary based on the type of unit, so it's different for a single-family home versus a, an apartment, for example. Information that we've looked at as part of this Phase One is permit data to get a sense as to what's being built and average size of units. We've evaluated some water use information where there is the ability to do like what Ashland did or what Eugene did in terms of establishing the relationship between water consumption either in the summer or in the winter and the house size, and there is regional data, both from the census for Albany specifically and from the Oregon Household Activity Survey for Lynn County, like what Lebanon has used. This chart shows you the single-family permits that were issued between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-one to give you a side, a a sense of the average and the and the range of homes that are being built, and based on this sample, the average is about eighteen hundred and fifty square feet for a single-family home, and you can see that the range is from basically a thousand and below to up to forty-five hundred. Again, this is doesn't represent the full inventory of single-family homes, this was just a three-year period, but is generally going to be representative of of the the average, you're going to have obviously some other units that are fall in where right now we're not showing any examples on some of these sizes, but I think that the average at eighteen fifty is probably a pretty reasonable assumption. Most of the homes being built, single-family category are three-bedroom, some four-bedroom as well, lesser on the the two-bedroom and the five-bedroom categories. Apartments for based, again, same time period sample, tend to be smaller per unit, probably not surprising, and see that the average of this sample was a thousand square feet per unit, and the range was about six hundred to fifteen hundred square feet per unit. So, when we look across the the type of units that were available in the data from an accessory dwelling unit or A D U up to an apartment, duplex, mobile home, single-family homes, the average size per unit does increase as we go to less dense housing structures, not surprising, and so this gives us some indication about just given that the number of people per household also tends to differ by the same categories, then doing some scaling or charging on a per, by type of unit would allow for recognition of differing impacts based on on the type of unit, and there's some implications for middle housing that we'll talk about at the end, middle housing being you know, duplex, triplex, up to about fiveplex. So, we've I'll walk through for each of your existing systems, the current S D C methodology, and just again, talk about what a potential alternative method methodology would be and some general S D C impacts associated with some of these scaling approaches. The transportation S D C, as I mentioned, is based on the type of unit, but within a unit type, the S D C is assessed uniformly, so for all single-family, the dwelling units, the S D C is charged based on point nine-nine trips per home, and that current fee is is just under forty-five hundred dollars. Apartments and the these categories for the other housing reflect what is available from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is the basically the gold standard source of how we estimate trips per unit for other types of of residential housing, and so they have categorized apartments based on low-rise, medium-rise, high-rise, but as you see that that with each of those categories, the number of trips per unit decreases as the density basically of that of those units increase, and that is again is generally reflective, the size of the unit is smaller and the number of occupants as well. So, within, for single-family, again, the a potential alternative is to do what Lebanon did, for example, to develop a tiered approach that has lower S D Cs for the lower tier and a higher S D C for the upper tier, and basically the middle tier is that average, and that would potentially, based on the tiers that that Lebanon used, that would potentially have thirty-five percent of your permits, based on that sample, that historical sample, be charged something different, either higher or lower than what is currently the uniform S D C. This just shows graphically how that would work, that, you know, on the lower end, the blue line represents the current, and no matter what size And no matter what size of home, everybody's charged the same. And under a three-tiered step approach, up to a certain point, in this case, it was fourteen hundred fifty square feet, you would be charged a lower SDC. Have a middle range that represented, captured the average and a little above and below that. And then in an upper tier that would be charged at a higher rate. The, again, the fee level here, yeah, well, in this case is reflective of the current SDC for Albany with those applied to those, those same tiers. For the water SDCs, this shows you, the current SDCs are, are assessed based on the, the size of the meter. Because the meter estimates the potential capacity need for a particular development. So you can see that there's the three-quarter inch meter, which is, as I said, most single family residential homes are going to be served by a three-quarter inch meter and charged thirty three hundred ninety-four. The alternative scaled approach would need to be developed specifically based on Albany's evaluation of your billing data. And we tend to look at a three to five year use. But this just gives you again, graphically, an idea of what that would be. It's instead of a flat line, it's, it's a sloped line. And that would have the potential, instead of having basically ninety-seven percent of single family homes charged the same, you would have variability within the SDCs. Some would be charged less than the thirty-three ninety-four and others would be charged more. The, the, any minimum and the slope of the steepness of the line is going to reflect that additional analysis that would tell us what that relationship between house size and square footage is for Albany specifically. Same idea for wastewater, it's, it's, again, it's based on water use. This is water that returns to the system. We estimate it based on the winter water use because there's not the impacts of your irrigation, which doesn't return to the wastewater system. Currently, there's a flat charge of forty-two fifty-five for dwelling unit. And so, again, we, we know generally that there, there is a relationship between the wastewater flow and the size of the home. But getting more precise in terms of what minimum amount would be appropriate and what that slope of that line would be is, is yet to be determined. Finally, parks. As, as we discussed earlier, it's, it's already a scaled approach that the city has used for, for many years. You have a, a new SDC methodology that was drafted as part of your master plan. And that has some recommendations for continued scaling. And council will be considering that methodology specifically at a future meeting. So we'll let that one move forward. But again, you already do provide a methodology that charges different SDCs for different sizes of homes for parks. And just wanted to mention because it's a growing interest within the state of how to provide more affordable middle housing options. That, as we've seen in, in these prior slides, that higher density characteristics do have small, reflect smaller units based on the permit data that, and this table again summarizes the results of that. That as we go from an ADU to a single family, there's a big difference in the average size, obviously, and for apartments, duplexes, mobile homes as well. And because the census data for Albany specifically, regionally, also tells us there, there are fewer people per unit for higher density housing. There is a basis for having lower SDCs for that type of housing. The, the current methodologies support lower charges per unit for parks. That scaled approach that you are using currently is applied to all different types of, of dwellings. And the transportation SDCs provide a lower SDC per unit when we move from single family to other categories. Water SDCs by being charged based on the meter size do provide a basis generally for having a lower SDC per unit for multiple units that are connected to a single three-quarter inch meter. Generally, you can serve a, a number of, of units, you know, irrigation needs vary. But you can serve more than one unit with a three-quarter inch meter oftentimes. And part of what we'll be looking to is whether council wants to look, move forward and actually developing options. Phase two of this would be to analyze, further analyze, establish those relationships between water use, wastewater flow and the size of scaling SDCs, you know, within different types of dwelling types. So we could look at apartments versus single family to the extent that that data is available. It's really comes down to a policy decision, both the fee levels, but also the methodologies. And so it's, you know, weighing different objectives. Have to understand that the scaled approach versus a, a uniform, one-size-fits-all approach requires different information being collected in the permitting process. You already collect information on the, the size of the home. So that wouldn't be a major change. Revenue collection, again, we, we would want to make sure that there was revenue neutrality is the objective. So considering the sizes of the units that are being built and making sure that we tailor the fee levels for each of the, the tiers to match what the, the revenue would be under a single one-size-fits-all approach. And considering any administrative costs, if there are additional demands that would be placed on the, the city under a revised approach. Equity and defensibility is a concern. Having some standard application that's based on the impact of the system and supported by local and regional data. So one of the reasons we did this phase one is to make sure, is there data available? Does it generally support this scaling approach? And it, it absolutely does. So it's something that council could consider. Just to summarize, this is, this is a trend started with parks and it's being applied to all systems now as local governments try to address affordability concerns and balance that with the needs to fund the infrastructure. And the data supports that there is a relationship between the house size, the type of unit and the impact on the system. And, you know, it does, a- as I said, the revenue neutrality depends in part on how the future development will, whether it will reflect the characteristics of prior development. But generally speaking, we can make some pretty good assumptions with respect to, by looking at the more recent development trends to make sure that we're accounting for changes in the general house, home sizes and other characteristics. But in the end, it's a, it's a council policy decision. Happy to answer questions.
Also, any questions for Councilor Kupczynski or first up?
Deb, has there, was there any discussion or maybe it's too soon as to on the history of SDCs across the state? Do any communities statewide be, are they, have they ever been fully reimbursed? We've got the reimbursement fee and the improvement fee. But anywhere SDCs have, does any community actually have them as a hundred percent reimbursed?
Well, yes, I mean, in terms of, are they charging the maximum allowable to, you know, that reflects the true cost of both the project list and the infrastructure that's already in place. And absolutely, yes, I'd say the majority of the cities that I work with are charging the full amount of the SDC because of the desire to have growth, pay for growth and not have the existing rate pairs or you know, single family homes and other development to be shouldering some of that cost.
So what am I inferring that effectively Albany historically has been subsidizing development by not charging the actual cost for the development, for the infrastructure?
Albany has chosen to, in many cases, charge less than what the project list and the methodology would support in terms of a maximum SDC. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other counselor? So, oh, so I've Counselor Novak and then Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm just curious though, because if you did charge the maximum in Albany as opposed to less than the maximum, do we have any studies showing how that would impact development? Additional housing, affordability, all those things.
I know, I, I think that, you know, this is the, the big question always about how do SDCs impact the, the development in terms of just attracting new development? And, and even, you know, when it's scaled, does it, is it going to incentivize building smaller units versus larger units, all of that? There is a study that's being done. The, the state is embarking on it, on a project this next year that's going to look at some of those same questions generally about the impacts of SDCs on home prices and affordability concerns. But, you know, it, it's, it's a complicated question. And while you could certainly figure out, well, what would be the cost, the total cost if the city were to assess the full SDCs, how that translates into the price of the home? You know, the development activity, et cetera, is a much more complicated question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. Counselor Johnson? Okay, I, I think you should unmute the council.
I thought I was all prepared. Yeah, this has been a good presentation. It's better listening to it being explained than to go through the reading of it because it's a little bit more understandable this way. And it's interesting to know that other cities actually have done the tiered. My question, I don't know if it's to you, to Rob, to Peter, I'm not sure. But do we have the capability of doing the change without, and you know, a lot of expense, since we already do parks, would it be? I'm sure not, I don't want to say easy fix, but could it be done without an exorbitant cost? Thank you.
I can speak to that a bit. Making changes to reflect what we've discussed today, if that's a, a direction we want to go. There is cost to do that, but I, I wouldn't describe it as exorbitant. There's, there's a, a process to go through, a public process to go through to adopt any changes to the methodology we would make. Kind of in addition to the work that Deb needs to go through to, to make the, the analysis to support those changes. But, you know, I'd hate to put a number to that, but, but I, I would, I would say the tens of thousands rather than hundreds, kind of a scale.
All right, that helps a lot because going into what we, you know, the final decision is going to be, I think that, that enters into it a lot for me. So thanks.
Well, yeah, it, it talks to a, a return on the investment, you know, do you spend half million to, to, whatever. So, yeah, it's a good, good question.
Thank you, counselor. Any other councilor have any questions? I, I, since nobody else is saying anything, has mentioned it, because Counselor Olson's out today. And so I'm sure we'll have questions on Wednesday. But I would like to know what that, that number would look like, a more realistic number from our consulting firm and also from the city standpoint. I, with House Bill two thousand and one, with the smaller units, the, the different types of housing, I think this is a good start. I'm hoping that will incentivize our developers to build smaller units. I think with the revenue coming back online with the taxes, I, I think in the long run, this may be a great decision for us. But I would like to know more about the numbers as far as implementation, the project and things like that. And I see that Counselor Bartholomew wants to be quiet, so Counselor Bartholomew.
I just, I just want to back you up, Mayor, as a, as being in the development process myself, I do, I can say that it has a big, bigger impact on the lower income housing that I am focused on. Specifically Habitat, it would have a fairly significant impact because our, the houses that we typically build are smaller. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, what did Mr. Evans?
Yes, so, so just to summarize real quick to make sure we, we understand our, our marching orders. We can come back with a, a cost to kind of, to continue to vet out the different alternatives, kind of what that cost would be. And then, but it sounds like overall there's a positive interest in, in pursuing and taking the next step to, to develop what kind of a scaled approach would be for water, sewer and transportation?
I, I think for me, I think this is a good idea to take, you know, a deeper dive or maybe even look at it. And Deb, your presentation was fantastic, so thank you for that. But I would ask that we get a copy of that, because I'm sure the council will have questions for our engineering department, Director Bailey and a few other folks. And so as we go talk to them individually, it would be very helpful to have that tool with us and we can mark up and ask questions and stuff.
We'll have that sent out to you, Mayor, all of you.
Thank you. Well done presentation, Deb. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, having said that, thank you for joining us this evening. We're going to move on to the next agenda item. That Vine Street License to Occupy Right-Away Discussion of Gordon Stephens, Stephens Meyer on pages eight through fifteen in your presentation, your agenda.
Hi there, I'm Gordon Stephens Meyer. I wonder if I could share my screen?
That can be arranged.
You should have that ability.
Okay. This is the, the site that we're talking about where they requested a license to occupy the right of way.
Gordon, it's not sharing.
It's not sharing, okay. Well. It did earlier today, let's see. How about now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, so this is the site, the, the Fishcorns, they own this property at the corner of Sixth and Vine. Their property has always used the Vine Street right-of-way as their, as their driveway, so they've always pulled in here. They've, over the years, if you look back on the aerial photos, they've slowly but surely.
Excuse me, sir, can you make this bigger or scroll out? Make it bigger? Is that possible?
Gordon, do you see, do you see the plus and minus sign that are right above where the, yeah, go ahead and hit that?
Okay, there we go.
There you go.
All right. I'm a, I'm a novice at this, sorry. And what they would like to do is to build a fence, they've already started the fence from the edge of the house over to here, and they'd like to place a gate here. They've had some problems with people basically invading their space out here. And so they would like to be able to control that. I spoke with our operations staff about this, they come in, you know, maintain the canal. And I asked them, this was going to be a problem for them, and they said as long as they had access to the gate, they, they wouldn't have any problem with it. They might come in here once a year to check on the fence, clear brush if there's any that needs to be done, but they've got access to the canal on the other side of the, of the canal, on the side of Vine Street, through this paved street. I'd like to, let me see, how can I get back to, here we go, show you a bigger picture up here in the memo. So the Fishcorns are right here at the top of the page. This is Sixth Street. All these areas that are outlined in yellow have, in some fashion, encroached upon the right-of-way. In some cases, it's as simple as they, there's, there's no pavement there, there's grass and they're mowing the grass. In other cases, like this property here, they've completely fenced it off and they, they are using it as part of the yard. And it varies anywhere between theirs. In some cases, there's a couple of bushes in the way, in other cases, they've kind of moved in, so as part of this discussion, we'd like to have your direction besides just on this property, what to do about all of Vine Street. But at any case, one solution we've thought of as staff is to have them, let them have a license to occupy the right-of-way, but we clearly stated in the license, in the language of the license, that that, you know, it's still cities right-of-way, you know, they need to get out of there whenever we need them out of there. So that's where we're at on this request. Let's see, we've, we've issued many licenses to occupy different things in the city over, over the years. There's licenses to occupy right-of-way, we've got other licenses to simply occupy city property. A few years ago, we did a couple of those up around the Broadway reservoir where we've got excess property and the neighbors wanted to use it for, just for more lawn, and we entered into a license to let them do that. And when and if we ever need that property, they need to get out of there. So that's kind of what this situation is. I guess that's the short of it, but let me know if you have any questions.
Mayor, this is Chris, can I add on just a little bit to Gordon's presentation?
Please do, councillor Johnson was first up after she finishes.
So this is a problem that's been going on for decades, and when the Fishcorns first approached us, you know, our, our, we don't as a general rule like to give licenses to occupy right-of-way. The challenge here is that there, we could go through and remove every encroachment into our right-of-way along Vine Street. And the challenge with maintaining that is that we would then probably need to go through and, and create a drivable surface there to discourage people from going back and doing the same thing again. And that's definitely something that the council can direct us to do, and we're happy to do that. Just knowing that that would take quite a bit of effort and time and, you know, potential disgruntlement from those neighbors. The solution here is because we can get to either side of the canal for almost the entire length. And the one section on 12th where it's, it's blocked on both sides, it's just shrubbery. We felt like letting these people be on notice that they're in our right-of-way and we know they're in our right-of-way. And we're not going to require them to leave right now, but when we do need them to leave, they have, you know, 30 days as the standard notice to get out. The other problem that happens right now is when we go to do maintenance along the right-of-way and we tell people to get their things out of our right-of-way, they tell us that they have this agreement, oh, I have this agreement with the city. You know, I can't tell you how many agreements with the city, quote unquote, we've been told about, that no one has. And so we want to give, treat everyone equitably, put them all on notice. And then if we need the right-of-way, we'll send them notice and get their possessions out of our right-of-way. So that's the long and short of it, but definitely the council can tell us to do something different if you'd like.
Thank you, Director Bailey. Chris, excuse me, councillor Johnson, you're first up.
Okay, um, thanks for that explanation, Chris. I have a couple of questions here. First of all, I mean, I'm, I'm surprised that we haven't done something about it before now. And is there a fee for the license that we are saying that we're going to do?
No, there is no fee.
Okay.
We have not charged anyone else a fee yet.
Okay, well, that, that was my second thing, that if no one else has been charged a fee, you know, for this license, that the Fish, I can't read, it's too small. Anyway, the people that are asking for it now, you know, that they don't be charged either, because that wouldn't be, wouldn't be fair, but um, I, I don't know if, I mean, if they're only given three days to get out, if they've got bushes there, they're not going to be able to just tear their bushes out in 30 days. So I think this is kind of something that we need to work on, staff needs to work on, or, or something, because all of a sudden, if we decide, well, yeah, we need it, so up until the, to the right-of-way, get everything gone. It, it's, I mean, and like you said, there's no, no agreement, even though they think there is. So it, this is kind of one of those things that it's too bad that, that it happened. I think it's a small area, so they, you know, everybody has more cars than they used to and stuff, and so you know, if we can help them out, I think that's, you know, it's the Fishcorns, you know, I can understand where they are. People just, you know, like walking on their lawns and stuff like that. So I'd say let's go ahead and do what we can for them, but make sure that everybody's very aware that it is the city's property and that they're just being able to use it. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Smith, you're next up.
Thank you. Couple of things. I had not been over to Vine Street for about a year, so I drove as much of the length of it as I could today. Thank goodness for my Jeep with four-wheel drive. It's, it's, it's not easy access in some places. I was pleased to see that there is access on one side or the other, however, most of the length of it, as director Bailey mentioned. The encroachment on, onto the city right-of-way along Vine Street and along some other alleyways in this part of town is a continual problem, has been for a long time. People like to store their junk there. And not, not necessarily just motorhomes and, and boats and possibly stacks of firewood, but junk. And I'm hoping that with the license to occupy is, if the council agrees to grant those, that there is an emphasis on the temporary nature of it. It's, it's not, they don't own the property. If they owned it, they'd be paying us taxes on it. And they, don't put anything there that you can't move right away. We've had code enforcement complaints about junk there and in the alleys, and typically it's a 30-day cleanup period. So the 30-day notice for moving your stuff or trimming, trimming your shrub, shrubs seems reasonable to me. The situation reminds me of advice I have received from a journalism professor when I was in college. If you're trying to get someone to interview, to grant you an interview and they don't, they say they don't have the time to talk to you, go and sit down, do not unbutton your coat, do not put down your purse, sit on the edge of the chair, act like you're there for a very short period of time and they'll let you stay. It works, it really does. So let's have these people sit on the edge of the chair. And if we decide to grant these licenses, and I think that will prompt cooperation and general happiness in the neighborhood. Done.
Thank you councillor Smith. Councillor Kupczynski was next, then councillor Novak and then councillor Bartholomew.
It hit home on a couple, a couple of items. It almost seems like we're allowing accidentally or intentionally or would be allowing an adverse possession to take place. And I'm not sure we want to go down that road on a, a long-term or regular basis. Does the city envision a future use for a complete one, one continuous runway down Vine? At some point in time, I know we talked about the S1A way back in the day, which never came to fruition, but absent that, my fear is that it's going to ask, you're going to get a lot of people asking to do, oh gee, they can do it, why can't I can get a permit to do the same thing? Effectively, you're going to be blocking off lots of blocks of, of the Vine. And if we do this, will there be any indemnification for the city? So that if anything ever happens on any of those properties, because it is city properties, that we would not be liable for anything that happened in that, in that event. And has there been any consideration for possibly a monthly rent and/or lease? Does that engender any other requirements? Just, I'm just talking off the top of my head, just wondering about some of these things. Done.
You sound like an insurance guy. I was going to ask that same question, so thank you.
Um, councillor Kupczynski, I'll try to remember all of your points, and I probably won't get them all, but my understanding, Sean Kidd is on the line, he can be the authority, but there is no such thing as adverse possession of municipal property. I went through this with Jim Delaporte on some issue I can't remember years ago. You, there is no, you cannot, oh, there's Sean, I'll let him talk.
No, you were doing great, Chris. So, you know, there, there won't be adverse possession claims or a, a successful adverse possession claim against the city. Number one, because it's city property. Number two, a license to occupy even for private property would do the exact opposite. Because one of the elements of an adverse possession claim is it has to be hostile, meaning without permission. And when you give someone a license, you're giving them permission to be on the property, recognizing they're there, which would defeat any claim for adverse possession that way as well. And then one of the other things I can answer is, in all of the, our standard template for license to occupy, there is an indemnification clause in there where the licensee is agreeing to indemnify and hold the city harmless. And I would envision that would be in those, those licenses as well, so.
Yeah, Gordon's got it here. Attachment C has the license language, and it does have, have the indemnification language there. The other question was about fees or rent. We, as Gordon says, we don't typically charge fees when we issue licenses to occupy. We've never done that in the past, so if the council wants to start that, we probably need some sort of official action to do that. And then the final question was about the use of this right-of-way. Obviously, the, the right-of-way was there to create a street, one side on either side, one side of the street on either side of the canal. And there is paved roadway in certain sections of Vine Street. If you've been down there, you can go from one side to the other, as councillor Smith said. You can pretty much get from 12th or from Queen all the way down to the treatment plant. There was the Kalutz Plan that had the Esplanade envisioned, there, that plan never came to fruition. And, you know, we don't have a defined need to go in and grade and pave the remaining portions of Vine Street. If the council would like us to do that, that's definitely something we can put into our work plan and we can, that would be a very clear answer to this question, which is, it's a road, you cannot put your stuff there. And that would be the only way I can see to definitively get people out of our right-of-way is if we reclaimed it and put it back to public use. When it's left in this situation where it's, you know, it's, it's our right-of-way, it potentially could be a road, but we're not actively using it, then this is what happens. So we have this sort of thing in lots of places around town. Most of the time, as councillor Smith said, we notify people when it gets to be a problem and they get their things out of our right-of-way. We occasionally have people who ask to use it, like up near the Broadway reservoir, and they wanted to grow a garden on our property. And we said, okay, you can do that, but when we need it, we're going to come take it back. So they got a license to occupy. In this situation, because we don't have plans to pave it anytime soon, we thought that the best thing to do would be to put all of these people on notice. We know you're in our right-of-way, you cannot claim to have some secret agreement to the property. And when we tell you, you have to leave, you have to leave. And if the council, as I said, if you want us to pave it and turn it into a road, we're fine with that. But that seems like an expense that we maybe don't need to go to right now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Director Bailey, for your explanation. Councillor Novak, you're next up.
Thank you. I just want to say a comment and a question. With regard to the Fishcorns situation, I don't have a problem with them doing a gate and a fence because they're having issues with people coming onto their property. I think that it's a very wise move to, as director Bailey said, potentially put all of those folks who live there and where those yellow strips are on notice, that we know you're here and you have stuff here, and we respect the fact that you have stuff there, but we may need you to move it. And then my question here, I guess for director Bailey, is you had mentioned potential maintenance as a reason why they would be, you know, why, why the city would need access to the right-of-way, and I'm wondering how often any type of maintenance along Vine Street takes place?
At least twice a year, we have the work crew. It's usually the, the county work crew is hired to go in and cut down the weeds and brush that builds up along the fence. And where there are obstructions, they do walk along, even where it's not a road, and they do encounter these situations where people think that it's their property and sometimes can get a little tense. But, so there's that routine maintenance along the fence, even on the unimproved portions where there's not a roadway. And then as far as the canal crew, it's not very frequently, but they will need occasionally to get in and maintain, for instance, the crib walls. If they're sloughing, they may need to get in and address some of that. You know, they'll repair the fencing that's along the canal, so it's routine, but not, you know, not weekly, I wouldn't say, but several times a year, they're probably in and out of these different sections.
So is it safe to assume, if I, if I might add, is it safe to assume that because this does happen on a fairly regular basis, a couple of times a year, that everyone who lives along there, who potentially has stuff in the right-of-way, in a, in a sense, they're, they're very much aware that people from the city come and do things? Again, I think it makes sense to put everyone on notice. It's much more affordable than paving that strip right now. I don't think the city has it in the budget. So that's, that's my thoughts there. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Novak. Councillor Bartholomew, did you respond to that question, director Bailey, or we go to the next question?
I think I got it all. If we were to be directed to pave it, it would be a multiple-year project to try to get that done, so not a quick solution.
Thank you very much. Councillor Bartholomew, then councillor Johnson?
Thank you. I used to live on Sixth Street about
Uh, thank you. I used to live on Sixth Street um about six and a half years ago. And or seven, almost seven years ago, anyway. Um, and so I know, I knew Ms. Ms. Frishcorn. And that part of the her, the the strip, the city property adjacent to her property has been occupied um uh for as long as I have been and I have lived in Albany um by some parts of her, by some things that have been there. So um it's interesting that when there's a desire to build a gate, there was a request for the the a license from the city and so license to occupy, which makes sense because they're gonna, it's gonna be an obstruction um to the, you know, or a barrier to city access with a gate there. A somewhat of a barrier. It's not a throughway anyway, like it would have normally been. But I understand that this is, this is a good thing that that the city is has this license and that the request has been made and I so that we all are taking care of this pieces of the property that is owned by the city to the best of our ability as well as uh um I've walked along that canal extensively and there the people that are taking care of it who landscape a little bit of the strip that that has actually added uh to the pleasantness of that area. Um, so I, I think a uniform way of of dealing with the situation is very appropriate.
And thank you. And just to clarify, the reason this came to us is because the work crew just did maintenance not too long ago and um noticed fence um footings were being, you know, the concrete was being poured for fence posts and um notified us. And so we sent the canal crew out and then, and they was very nice, you know, she was very nice. She stopped what she was doing and um, you know, and and give us time to consider this. And um, you know, it's, we, we wanted to try to be um considerate of what she's trying to do, but also it is the city's um right of way and we can't approve these all over the place. So what, what do we do? That's why this is coming to you. This is really a policy question. If you want us to assert our right, we will. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Counselor um Johnson.
Yeah, I was uh looking up uh above the attachment and it says that limitations, no encroachment in a public alley shall exceed four feet. Now, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot more than four feet on some of these encroachments. And so, you know, and I'm wondering too, is, okay, now that this has been brought out to the public, uh, are other people gonna think, well, we could go ahead and do it, even though they were, a lot of them already do? But just because we pave it doesn't mean, I mean, I'm thinking it, it's okay, but then on the back of my mind, I'm thinking, well, wait a minute. This is city property and um they knew it when they bought the property. So do we start giving licenses and and then who's gonna enforce it? And the precedents we're starting, uh, you know, I'm, what does, what does staff feel about this? Because you're the ones that have to enforce it. Is it possible?
These are tough questions and um without a license to occupy, our answer to everyone is no. You know, our answer to their fresh corns would be no, no, you cannot. And as a matter of fact, get your stuff out of the right of way. You know, that's really the strict answer. And um, but, and that's where we went first, honestly. So Gordon and I talked and, and we were at, no, we're not gonna allow this um because we don't allow this type of use in the, in the public right of way. Now, um typically, we have small licenses to occupy. Like there's a building downtown that is commercial on the bottom and residential on the top, and they needed to swing their door out. And so we gave them a license to occupy that for the portion of the sidewalk where the door could swing out, right? So those sorts of things. So stat, I mean, and definitely your point, Counselor Johnson, about opening up a floodgate is a hundred percent accurate. That we, that was another consideration. We hesitated to bring this to the council because now everyone who lives along adjacent to a public right of way is going to be asking for their license to occupy. And those are all handled on a case by case basis. We get some of those requests already. We might get more. I mean, this is definitely not without risk. But in the case of Vine Street, um, you know, it's, it is fairly unique in that it's um uh right adjacent to a canal facility that we need to be able to get to. And uh the language in the license might be able to be modified in such a way that we can say things like, um, you know, you won't inhibit the ability of people to walk and perform maintenance, at least on foot. Or that um where there are, you know, you, there's no addition of uh plantings or structures or other uh things that would be permanent. And um we could, we maybe can add language like that if it's not, not already in there. But you know, it's such a small thing. It's, well, I hesitate to even bring it, but it turns into this big, big question. So I appreciate all of your thoughts and um hopefully we can get to a, an answer that will work for everybody.
What you just said is maybe the key is that they can't do anything that's there permanently. They wanna park there or something like that, that's fine, but not to put bushes, not to put fences, keep them on their property and not into the right of way. That might, you know, language like that might, might help because you're right, it is a unique street. And I don't think too many people go down it um except, you know, like Counselor Smith said, you know, with four wheel drives because pretty rough. So um I think the new, the different language might help. Thanks.
Um, so Peter Trote, Council, uh City Manager was next up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to offer this question to the city attorney, which, which hopefully perhaps it might uh help a little bit. And that question is
Excuse me, Mr. Stevens, you can stop sharing.
If the city can put restrictions on the use of an easement. In other words, can you put restrictions such as no junk and trash, uh no RV storage and so forth? That's the question for Sean, but uh, but I would also like to point out that the original request that gave rise to this was a request to put a gate on a public, public property, which seems a little bit uh problematic. And perhaps you could address that as well.
I agree.
Can you hear me? Very good. Yeah, well, so I am not, I mean, I don't know, I don't wanna say anybody has asked me, but I don't really think this is the, the greatest uh idea in the world, but that's my, my opinion. Um, I, I think some, some councillors have brought some very good points that this may be precedent setting. That other people around the city or other, you know, parcels may say, well, why can't we do this? We're um, you know, using, using public property for personal benefit or whatever it may be where it impacts our ability to get to the canal when we need to. I would defer to Chris on that. Um, but I can see that being an issue, putting the gate on there, seems like a problem. So I, 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 I can see some issues here and I appreciate the councillors bringing those up, so.
Are you done? Uh, City Attorney?
I, if there's a question
Councilor Novak, we're back to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So um initially, I didn't have a problem with, you know, helping the fresh corns out. But now that we've had all this discussion, it kind of makes more sense to my mind um that we stick with the no permanent anything in the right of way. And um Director Bailey, Bailey had used the words putting everyone on notice who is in those areas, who currently has stuff of whatever kind um in those places. That I, I think it makes the most sense in order to avoid opening a really nasty can of worms down the road and setting precedents and all that, um potentially to go to all of those individuals and all of those homes on, on the areas that are impacted on Vine. And in effect, kindly and graciously, put them on notice that they are not to have anything in a permanent sort of way. And um it makes me kind of sorry for the fresh corns if indeed they are having trouble with individuals coming onto their property. But maybe they could put a fence on their actual property line and avoid, you know, and avoid the uh the right of way situation. And then if we just make that the rule, sorry, if you, if you are next door to a right of way situation, you don't have access to that. I mean, outside of walking on it, you can't, it's not your property. And we just say it as nicely as possible and and make everyone understand that that's actually the policy of the city. We have to have a policy, I think.
I think that's right.
Well said, Counselor Novak. Okay, um, Counselor Bartholomew, you're next up. I think we need to move this discussion along to give the staff some direction. So go ahead and go ahead and share with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's just, I, I was noticing, I was realizing this is a similar situation to like Hazelwood Park. There is a driveway into Hazelwood, it, what, what used to be Hazelwood Park. Um, there was a driveway and that was the access for the house that was, that was right there um in the entryway to the park. And so that house was given access on city property to get to their driveway. It's similar here on Vine is that this was an access to their garage. Um, and that's what they were using it previously until they started storing items in that. And that as a, as a driveway, it gives them access to their property, but does not obstruct city access also.
I agree.
Okay, so staff, us, council, what would you like to do? I, I do have one thing I would like to clarify or get sorted out. This is a waterway, correct? It's a protected waterway?
Um, the canal is a right of way, is a waterway. Oh, man. Canal is a waterway, but the um right of way on the outside of the waterway is for transportation.
So I understand that. My question to you would be if, say, they spill some antifreeze or some motor oil or in that, we have to, we as a city has to report that, correct?
Um, yes, well, yes, we would have to report that and clean it, clean it up. Yeah.
So, so my concern is that we give them this access, they make a spill and don't report it. And somebody down the line says, oh, there's oil coming down from this section or, you know, how do we manage that?
Yeah, well, the canal is a nightmare in that regard anyway because it goes along behind hundreds of properties through town and Counselor Smith is one. And there's any number of ways it can be contaminated and also along roads and under bridges. And so in terms of, uh, I mean, we should put it in a pipe, but uh we don't have a billion dollars. So um it is a kind of a nightmare in terms of potential contamination. And that, I mean, that could happen for sure, but whether we, we assert that it's right of way or not, that could, I think, still happen.
Okay, thank you. Got my question answered. So Council, would you like to come back with this on Wednesday?
Yes. What would you like us to come back with? Exactly. Well, we just
Stuff today, we just bring it back on Wednesday.
You're right, but I'm not clear if your direction is for us to, well, if you want us to issue license of, of to occupy, we don't really need a council vote on that. If you want to vote on something else, then we can come back with it, whatever it is.
So, so Counselor Smith has something.
Why don't we ask staff to come back with a plan for how to notify everyone along there of what is allowed and what is not allowed? And um some kind of a, a schedule for make temporary storage, but um to go back to my interview analogy, don't put your feet up on the desk and don't bring your own coffee cup and hang it on a peg in the wall. Um, just to make, make it clear that it's temporary use only, um, no, no permanent structures.
So would that fence be considered temporary or permanent? She's putting holes in the ground.
Concrete footings sound pretty permanent to me.
Thinking too.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Smith. Uh, Peter Trote, you have something?
Uh, yes, Mayor, just for, for Chris, Chris isn't piping up here, but so I, I understand the direction is to, is to come back with uh, uh, a discussion about how we're going to enforce the existing policy.
Yes.
And we're not going to adopt a policy of granting um easements or right to occupy. Okay.
Right. That's the way I feel.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Director Bailey, for that explanation and and also City, City Attorney as well. Um, and thank you, Mr. Stefan, Stefan Zemeyer, for being here tonight to present to us. Uh, next up on
I'm sorry, Gordon, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I wondered, should I tell the fresh corns then that uh we won't be giving them license to occupy?
That's what it sounds like, Gordon, so maybe we can give them a call.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, business from the council. First on my screen is Counselor Kaptinski.
Nothing tonight.
I have, uh, my screen would be Counselor Johnson.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Novak.
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Smith.
One item. Um, council uh has been, has received a couple of emails from Jennifer Steininger in the uh Willamette neighborhood regarding the uh intersection of Salem Avenue and Gary Street, where the tracks uh come up mighty close to the, the uh stop sign. I would like, that has prompted me to, I responded to her last week, have not heard back from her. But I would like to have, find out when we are reviewing the transportation system plan. Again, we do that every year and it, that might be a project that we can get an update on at that time and um consider if it needs to be moved around in the priority schedule. I don't know what the accident history is there. Um, I know it's a, like the Queen Avenue Crossing. That's an uh intersection that I routinely avoid and I tell other people to do the same thing. So um just uh the question tonight is when, when do we review that plan again?
Thank you. Director Bailey, your response?
Um, yes, I don't know and I'll find out and get back to you.
Thank you. Counselor Bartholomew.
I have a question of, since I am not here on Wednesday, um, do I, should I? Is there, is it appropriate to give input on issues on, for Wednesday or how, how does that work? It's a question of, of, of process.
Let me ask, Allison here, it's City Clerk here. No, she's not. What about City Attorney? What are, what are your thoughts?
Give an input on items that are gonna be on the council for Wednesday? Depends on what they, I would ask uh Counselor Bartholomew, what, what, what issues they are. Are they public hearing issues or they, what are they?
Uh, no, I was just, you know, like if I hold on.
I mean, we, we don't wanna discuss anything that's on the agenda for Wednesday night and deliberate.
That's correct.
Yeah, and if it's anything to do with a, a public hearing, then I wouldn't. But if it's just like housekeeping issues on a, on a topic that's not a public hearing, then you could do that.
Okay, so I will, is, is it appropriate to like write a message and send to the council or send to Peter or?
Well, how would I do that?
Peter, Peter, yes. The entire, the entire council, no, but Peter, yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I can take care of it from there for you, Counselor Bartholomew.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, um, Counselor Olson is not here. I just have one thing. I've been meeting with uh, I mean, with a couple, a school teacher regarding uh the, the amount of hours and the amount of time and of their own personal money they're spending. And I've read, you know, I'm gonna And I've read, you know, I'm gonna be reading at local schools, just, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. Um, and they're putting together, I asked them to put together a list of needs, 'cause teachers are spending, you know, a thousand dollars or five hundred dollars of their own money on simple supplies like pens and pencils, markers for the kids. And, um, I would like to talk to the council about encouraging people in your circle, sphere of influence or circle of influence to participate in volunteering at a local school one or two days a month, just to read the children, the kids needed, they were in isolation all last year. And I know this is not a school board meeting, but, um, the kids are, the kids need our help. And so, and so the teachers, and they're overworked, they're understaffed, there's no substitutes, and so if we can, if you can find, you know, thirty minutes, hour out, one day a week, or every other week, just read to children, I'd greatly appreciate it, 'cause it's, it's a need. So, other than that, I have nothing else, um, other than, you know, wishing you all a great holiday season. Uh, next up is the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and I don't have too much for you, just to let you know, as I mentioned earlier, that that SDC presentation will be set out to each of you for your reference, and also to let you know that on Wednesday night, we will have an executive session. So, late this afternoon, you, you should have received a supplemental agenda for Wednesday. Yes, I see you got it, and so, uh, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, uh, and so at this time, I do have, well, I'll talk about it Wednesday night. At the Summer adjournment meeting, I'll see you all on the fifteenth at six PM, uh, right here and on this channel, and, uh, have a good evening, now.
You're not, everybody.